Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of January 28, 2008. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the secretary please call the roll?
Commissioners Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Grumney?
Absent.
Commissioner Len?
Here.
Chair Reynolds?
Here.
It's time for public comments and I do not have any cards. So we'll continue on to written reports. Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a supplemental packet for tonight's meeting with regard to Case 6B. It includes certain modifications to conditions for that tract, both to the, or for that project, both to the tract and to the residential planned development permit as well. So I bring that to your attention and staff will review that as part of that case. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll then go to Case 6A. Will the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding Case PPD 2007-70654. Applicant: Robert and Christina Unfug. Request to allow first and second floor additions with a balcony to an existing two-story single-family dwelling. Location: 3391 Holloway Street. Recommendation: Approved with conditions.
Mr. Chang, would you please give the staff report?
Good evening, Chair Reynolds and members of the Commissions. For this project, the applicant is proposing to add two-story addition with a balcony to an existing two-story, single-family dwellings. And that this project will be over 50% of existing building footprint. And if you can turn your attention to the screen in front of you. And this project is located at 3391 Holloway Street. And the addition is from this picture, basically toward the left-hand side of the existing house. And also the balcony, you can see the back, and the balcony will be smaller than the previous balcony. You can see kind of wrap around, around the corner of existing house. The applicant is proposing to add, on the first floor, including a family room addition and also as well as the dining room. On the second floor, the applicant is proposing to add a game room, a bedroom, a bathroom, as well as a balcony. The addition will be increase the original footprint by approximately 68%. And this project requires Planning Commission review because the applicant is adding 50% of existing building footprint. And the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as a minor alteration to existing structure. And this is an existing front elevation from a street perspective. And the addition itself will be appeared, from this perspective, will be appear on top of the existing garage. And the roof line basically will kind of carry over to the, on top of the garage. And the balcony will be basically, basically facing the rear area, so it won't be visible from the street side. And this existing rear elevation house, as you can see, the second-floor door, that's where the existing, the previous balcony was. And the applicant is also proposing to put the balcony back at where the existing location is. And the addition itself, basically, you'll be wrapped around the existing second-story house, as well as adding on top of the existing garage, which is on your right-hand side. And this lot is approximately .2 acres. And the building height after the addition will be approximately 23 feet and 6 inches, which comply with the municipal code requirement of 25 feet. And the applicant is proposing to add 999 square feet. So the total square footage after the addition will be approximately 2,895 square feet. And the floor area ratio for this project will be .33. And for building materials, including colors, roofing materials, and stockings, will be comply with the PPD design criteria. And for this project, there are other two-story in the neighborhood, including this one. This is an existing two-story house. And for the square footage, this project will be approximately 16% larger than the nearby houses in the areas. And for the floor area ratio of .33, basically, will be within the range of adjacent house. And the building height of this building actually is close to existing building height, which is 23 feet and 6 inches. And the architecture of this building is compatible with the existing houses, as well as, was compatible with the surrounding dwellings. And for recommendations, staff is recommending the Commission to approve this project based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in staff report. This concludes staff's presentation and staff's ready for any question?
Questions to staff? Mr. Adam?
Thank you very much. Hello, Mr. Chang. How are you this evening? Just a couple of quick questions. The second-story addition, will it be at or below the current roof line?
And the addition will be approximately couple of inches above the existing roof line, but it will be very close, I'd say a couple inches.
That sounds close enough, a couple inches in. Okay, good. And this is just a question about floor area ratio. This is a relatively small lot and the floor area ratio is .33%, which is, which is in line with the neighborhood, I think, as staff points out. But just as a general rule, in your, in your mind, is there a floor area ratio that would, like a threshold that would signal to you an overbuilding on a lot?
What staff is providing a floor ratio is one more method for the Commission, as well as for staff to do research to kind of, kind of determine a project. So it's more, one more way of determining whether the project is kind of compatible with the neighborhood. In this case, since staff has provided a table in the staff report, which does come compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods, and therefore, staff is recommending approval of the project based on the similar floor area ratio, as well as the square footage.
Okay, yeah, I understand. It was more of a hypothetical question, but maybe it doesn't really have an answer. You have to kind of, kind of go case by case. You know, as far as floor area ratio and, I mean, if you had a floor area ratio of .75, would that be indicative of perhaps the overbuilding on a lot, is what I was trying to get at? But, like I said, it, it's more of a general question and not pertaining to this particular case, so we'll leave it at that. Thanks, Mr. Chang.
Are there any other questions? Then I'll call the speaker, Mr. Scott West. Would you please come forward and state your name and city of residence? And you have 15 minutes.
West, I live in Camrio, California, and representing the contractor, Forest Construction, and the Unfugs. And basically, I know you all have a letter presented to you by Mr. Unfug that, that we concur with. And we sat down with Matt when, when we were first going through these plans and subsequently came up with the, the approved with conditions that, that he has found that we concur with. And my point being here is just if you, from a, you know, contractor standpoint, if you have any questions of, of us, or, you know, the procedures or anything that we're going to employ in building this addition.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Len?
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Thanks for coming down.
Yeah, sure.
Have you received any objections from any of the neighbors, or have you shared the plans with any of the neighbors in the neighborhood?
We haven't, have had no objection, objections at all.
Okay. Are the Unfugs going to speak tonight, or are you speaking on their behalf?
I'm speaking on their, on behalf, but he's more than willing, if you'd like to ask him some questions.
No question, no, no question, but as long as he's not going to come, I just, I just wanted to say thank you from, from me and probably from most others here for your son's service, so we received your letter, so.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. West. And we'll go back to staff. Anything else, Mr. Chang?
Staff has no comment at this time.
And Commissioners, do you have any comments? Then, Mr. West, you have five more minutes, if you'd like to add anything. Oh. I assume then you don't have anything else to say. Okay, at this time, then I'll close the public hearing. And comments, Mr. Len?
Do I have to do comments? Okay.
No, you can, yes.
Now, I, I think that this project is, is, is well thought out and well planned. I know that there was some concern about the, the FAR, and as we, as we go through these things, it's a relatively new entity here. They, without being a mathematician, which, gosh knows, I'm not, when you're dealing with a two-story structure, that, that FAR number, had it been a single story, would be far less than what that number represents. So I think it's important that we all recognize that, that the 3-3 is a combination of the two stories. If they were relatively the same square footage, then we would have an accurate thing. So if, if, if it weren't a normal circumstances, that FAR would be, would be great less than, great smaller than what it is, much smaller than what it is right now. That's exactly what I wanted to say. I also know that that neighborhood is a, is a well-kept, it's, it's an older neighborhood in town, and, and it probably, it's right on that cusp of folks doing exactly what you, you want to do with that particular project. It's kind of right for that. I know folks that live in that area. And so I'm going to shut up now. And with that, I'm going to move to approve PPD 2007-70654, subject to the findings and the, and conditions of approval in the staff report.
Any other comments to the motion? Okay, and I'll just say that I'm very pleased to see the addition, and I am familiar with Forest Construction, so I know that it's going to end up being a very nice addition to this house. Commissioner Len, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
And there is a 10-day appeal period. Thank you. We'll go on to Case 6B. And Mr. Towne wanted to make some remarks before we open the hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The issue before you tonight with regard to Case 6B is a referral from the City Council, insofar as the council is asking for the Planning Commission to...
Would the secretary please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding Case TR-5363, RPD 2002-540. Applicant: Mohammed Humkar. Request to consider a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan, and a referral from the City Council of a revised plan for a subdivision of 42.82 acres into 10 lots of record, and to allow construction of nine single-family detached dwellings. Location: South side of Olson Road between Hardy Lane and Country Club Drive. Recommendation: Approved with conditions.
Thank you, and we will go to Mr. Towne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try this again. This issue, as was just mentioned, is a referral from the City Council to the Commission, insofar as the council is looking to the Commission to review the plans for a revised location for three lots, were part of Track 5363, which is located in northeastern Thousand Oaks. This tract came before the Commission in 2006, at which time the Commission approved six lots at this tract and deleted the subject three lots. The applicant has redesigned these three lots in response to the Commission's previous concerns. And therefore, the issue before the Commission tonight are the three lots that have been redesigned, the six lots that were approved by the Commission in 2006, is already behind us. And to both assist the Commission in making their recommendation to the council, and also to provide background information, a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for these three lots. And that was, of course, included in your packet. Staff also included in your packet a copy of the original mitigated negative declaration to provide background information with regard to those six lots that were approved, and also to give the Commission an idea of where the three lots that you'll be looking at tonight were originally proposed, so you can draw comparisons between the two sites. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll go to Mr. Renkey to give the staff report.
Chair Reynolds and members of the Commission, the request is previously stated to consider revised plans for three lots for single-family detached dwellings previously deleted by the Planning Commission. The request is to provide a recommendation to the council on the mitigated negative declaration and monitoring plan, and for the revised plans for the three lots, which are part of a 42.82-acre subdivision into 10 lots, which would allow the construction of nine single-family detached dwellings. Here's a aerial of the project location. And to familiarize yourself, the, the bottom of this, of the slide is the Calleagus Water District Facility. And then over to the left, on the west side of Olson Road, is the Thousand Oaks Police Administrative Facility. And then over in the lower right-hand corner is the Wood Ranch, Simi Valley area. And then to the north is, north of Olson Road is an unincorporated area in the county. The Track 5363, as stated, it's, it's proposed to subdivide 42.82 acres into nine residential lots and one open space lot, and to construct nine single-family detached dwellings. In 2006, the Planning Commission approved the subject applications, but only for the easterly six lots. The three westerly lots were deleted because the proposed access road involved significant grading and few shed impacts in the ridgeline area. The applicant appealed the deletion of the three lots, lots 7, 8, and 9, to the City Council. The applicant then submitted revised plans to relocate the deleted lots and eliminate the proposed access road along the ridgeline. On April 3, 2007, the council, at the applicant's request, referred the revised plans for the three lots back to the Commission for review. Here is a photo showing the view from the proposed B court, looking west. And then over on the right is Olson Road. A view of the proposed three lots, still looking west. View of proposed B court looking southwest. And view of proposed B court looking north. View of the three-lot location looking north. And a view from the ridgeline to the proposed B court and lot location. And a view from the ridgeline to the northwest portion of the property. And this photo and, and the following photos have been included for, for reference purposes. It's a view of the A court and the six-lot locations looking east that were previously approved. And this was a view from the ridgeline towards the proposed A court. And this is up on the ridgeline area of the property, looking east. The project design. Overall, 11.25 acres are proposed to be developed, that's 26% of the site. The remaining 31.57 acres are to be left in open space, and that's about 74% of the site. The nine single-family homes are proposed in two residential clusters. On the east, the six lots previously proved, and on the west, the three lots subject of this appeal. The revised plan relocates the three westerly lots from the upper hillside area to the lower area near Olson Road. Access now is from the new B court, which is a public street at Olson Road, and not through the ridgeline area. The new plan also eliminates the emergency road connection to Hardy Lane. And here's a site plan showing the previously approved six lots to the right, in the upper right-hand corner, and then the three lots on the west side of the property. Here's an enlarged site plan of the three lots. Evaluation: The three westerly homes within the portion of the property designated for development in the zoning pattern adopted by the City Council in 1980. The, there's no development in the protective ridgeline area. The Commission's concerns regarding the original plan included the location of the three lots, the access road through the ridgeline area, encroachment into 25% natural terrain, the length of the access road to the three lots, and then height of manufactured slopes. The location of the lots. The relocation of the lots from the upper to the lower hillside area eliminates visual impacts to steeper hillside and the ridgeline. The proposed three dwellings would be single-story, to be visually compatible with Olson Road, which is a scenic highway. The axis through the ridgeline area. The revised design preserves the ridgeline area and the upper hillside slopes. The ridgeline and upper slopes are now in opens, in the open space lot. Encroachment into 25% natural terrain. The new cul-de-sac eliminates encroachment into 25% natural terrain along the ridgeline and upper hillside areas. The 25% natural terrain encroachment in the revised design is the same as, same amount as before, but located in lower slope areas and a portion of the drainage. The length of the access road. The, the previous ridgeline access road was 2,200 feet long, and it's now 350 feet in length. The height of the manufactured slopes, they've been reduced to 25 foot or less to conform to city standards. Environmental review: In 2006, the Planning Commission approved the MND for Track 5363 and easterly, and the easterly six homes. The MND #218 evaluates environmental effects of the revised plan for the westerly three homes. The Commission should provide recommendation on the mitigated negative declaration #218 to the City Council in conjunction with the consideration of this revised design. Potentially significant enviro, environmental effects noted, have been noted in the initial study. Through incorporation of mitigation measures, these effects can be reduced to insignificant level. The applicant has agreed to the mitigation measures in both MNDs as required by SEQA. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the revised MND #218 and the mitigation monitoring plan. And approval of the appeal of the Commission's original approval, thereby approving the project, including the relocated three lots... three lots shown on the revised plans, subject to conditions. And staff is available for any questions.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Renkey, how are you?
Hi.
Very good. Well, there's a lot of conditions on this project, so you'll have to forgive me if I jump around a little bit. Some of them are interrelated, and I hope I don't get repetitive, but I'll give it a shot here and see where we go. My first question is that business on the east side of the project where the, what's left of that canyon will be filled in, you know, the canyon that is bisected, I guess, by Olson Road. If I read right, it's 45 feet deep, and they're going to put in 26,000 cubic yards of fill. Per the plans, what's going to be on top of that fill? Is there going to be homes, or will it be the cul-de-sac road, or what exactly?
In both locations, on both the east side and the west side, both of those depressions will be filled. They were once the upper, the upper part of canyons that were, that were kind of isolated from the rest of the canyon when Olson Road was bridged over and constructed. So both cul-de-sacs will be in that fill area as well as all of the residential homes.
Okay, so there will be homes on there. Well, what, isn't that a lot of area to fill up? I mean, as canyons go?
Yeah, they were rather deep, deep depressions.
Yeah. So what would prevent settling, you know, in the future?
Let's say I should probably refer that question over to our Public Works Department.
Okay. Or I could ask the applicant, I suppose.
That's correct, either one.
Okay, well, I'll hold that question there unless someone's from Public Works wants to answer that.
Oh, the applicant's engineer will.
Oh, okay, great. Very good, very good. And as far as encroachment into the, you know, the greater than 25% slope, it has been minimized in the sense that it, you know, we're further down the slope, but there is some encroachment, and it says it was a .50 acres worth of encroachment, but the staff report calls that, quote, insignificant? But to me, a half an acre seems significant.
Yes. The majority of it is within the drainage area, the depressed drainage area, which will be, will be filled in and eventually not visible to the public, and the other couple of areas were kind of tips of fingers that extended down from the upper hillside area.
So part of that stuff that we're talking about is in those depressions that'll be filled in?
That's correct, most of it.
I see, okay. Well, this might be a question actually for our Council, Council Moon and the scenic highway element, to conform with that. We're asking that they be single-story homes, no greater than 21 feet, and they'd be deed restricted, and I don't really know the answer. This is probably a deed restriction. I mean, how strong is a deed restriction? Could someone come up 10 years later and say, you know, I want to put a second story on this house?
The thing about a deed restriction is it will actually be recorded against the property, so any property owner is put on notice that they cannot put a second story on the property.
They couldn't appeal that, they couldn't?
They could, they could appeal it. They could come to the City Council and ask for modification and ask that that condition with the deed restriction be eliminated, and the count, it would be within the Planning Commission or the City Council's prerogative to make that change, but that's the only way that it could be modified, is through acquiescence from the city.
I take it, though, that would be rather unprecedented, though, to appeal a deed restriction?
Well, in my short time here, I'm not aware of it happening.
Okay, okay, great. That's what I wanted to know, thanks. So Lot 10 is 74% of the site, and that's, that's the open space, and that's going to be transferred to the city and perhaps ultimately COSCA. If COSCA will take it, or other than that, it would be transferred over to the Homeowners So how, okay, I mean, I could see how, if it was transferred to COSCA, there'd be real solid protection for that open space. How about if it stayed in the hands of the Homeowners Association? Would it be, should it be recorded as some sort of restricted use, or how would, how would it be protected in that event?
There are.
Are you referring to the fuel modification area?
No, no, Lot 10, just the open space area in general. If it went to go to COSCA, let's say, and the homeowners reverted to the Homeowners Association, what would?
So you're asking hypothetically if you didn't agree with the condition to make them dedicated, or at least offer for dedication to the city? Hypothetically speaking, that's what you're asking?
Well, I thought if I read it correctly, if COSCA didn't take it, then it would revert to the HOA, the Homeowners Association.
I think Mr. Town will have an answer.
Mr. Town?
Thank you. When it comes to an open space offer like this, the condition requires it to be offered to the city of Thousand Oaks. In this case, I can say with a high level of confidence that the city would accept it. After that, it's a decision of the City Council if they actually want to approve that that open space lot transferred to COSCA. But in our open space element, we have a policy that says that most open space lots and areas should in fact transfer to COSCA for long-term stewardship. So we can't say right now that COSCA will definitely be the property owner, but it's very likely that they will, and I'm very confident the city in fact will accept the open space lot up front and then subsequently down the line transfer it to COSCA. So there's very little chance that the HOA would end up with it.
Okay, well, I mean, that's great. To me, that would be ideal. I just always wanted to look at the other side of it, just in case, the Homeowners Association, what protection would be involved there, but that's a good enough answer for me. Condition 118 talks about, let me see if I can get this here, private usable open space. What does that mean exactly?
Those, that is the rear yard area for each of the single-family dwellings, and it would be like their outdoor patio area and their backyard lawn area, and.
Okay.
They have to have a certain number of square footage depending on the bedrooms, number of bedrooms in the home, and then also the gradient of the property has to be less, area has to be less than 10%.
Okay. All right, so it just, it has nothing to do with Lot 10 and open space in general? It's strictly to the lot that the home is on?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just change gears here for a second and talk about a traffic situation, and this would have to do with Condition 40, I believe. If I have this right. And it talks about.
Commissioner Adam, Ms. Flory from the Traffic Division is here.
Oh, yes. Hi, hello. Okay. Yeah, I believe this is Condition 40, so there's going to be a, okay, Condition 40 designates this deceleration lane going into the tract, which I understand, and that would seem to make it safer, safer to get off Olson Road and get into the tract, so you could, because the cars are going pretty fast on Olson, 60 miles an hour, as the study says. What I'm wondering about is, as you leave the tract and you make that right turn onto Olson, actually, this has more to do with Condition 47, where it talks about that site visibility zone. So you're going to make this right turn, and during peak traffic hours in the morning and the evening, there's a lot of cars on there, and they're going freeway speeds. Is this going to be safe?
It's designed, it meets the design standards to be safe, yes. We don't, we're not conditioning it to put in acceleration lane, if that's maybe what you're picturing, because they have enough sight distance that they can see a car coming, they can make a right-hand turn, and accelerate up to 60 without getting rear-ended.
Even during peak traffic hours in the morning and the evening?
That's how, it's designed that way, so they can, they can see far enough away that they'll be able to see when a car's coming in order to make that a safe ride out.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I guess you're referring to the sight visibility zone that they talk about there, and whereby that, which is another thing that concerns me a little bit, because I could picture myself sitting there, ready to make this right-hand turn, and naturally I'm looking left to see the traffic, oncoming traffic, and, and the condition, I think it's Condition 47, says the sight visibility zone shall be maintained, but there's a lot of other conditions that talk about landscaping in there, and trees, and the highway element talks about that there should be a corridor of landscaping between the sidewalk and the development, and I just wonder if all this wouldn't ultimately conflict with the sight visibility zone? Maybe not six months from now, or a year from now, but four, five years from now when it's built, and everybody's moved on, and the landscaping's growing, and there's fences in there, or who knows what, is it going to tend to obscure the person who's looking to get out as he looks left?
If, well, first, there would, there would be no fences in there, and we have this situation throughout the city, as landscaping grows, it's maintain and cut back. So you have in between this three and a half feet to seven feet zone that you can see clear, and it's, if it's within the public right-of-way, the city's Public Works Department maintains it. If it's within private property, the private property owner maintains it.
Which is the case here?
I think it's a combination of both. It's particularly for the westerly driveway, westerly cul-de-sac, there's more property that's within the private property, but it's, it's shown on the plan where it's a clear zone, and they're conditioned to keep that clean, and it's to every property owner that lives in that cul-de-sac to keep it clear.
It'll also be recorded as an easement on the property, which enables the city, and this is, I know that this happens as we speak right now throughout the city, if they, the city will go out there and actually make sure that there is adequate sight distance, and if there isn't, they'll contact the property owner, make them, you know, cut back some of the landscaping to make sure that there is adequate sight visibility, and that's the purpose of recording it as an easement, so that future property owners are also put on notice that they can't put, you know, high shrubs in this area, and, you know, and that they have to maintain it, they can't put fences in this area. It's just another tool for the city to make sure that sight visibility is maintained.
So how is that enforced as a city? Ispect it periodically, or on a perpetual basis, or?
A combination. We have a very vocal public that tells us every time they can't see coming out of a driveway, and they call up the city, and our landscape crews go out there immediately. So that's, that's, so the people living in this cul-de-sac would be their own police, really, and as soon as it starts growing, they would probably call the city, because the first feeling is that it's city property, we need to trim it, and then we trim it, and if it's not on our property, then we write to the property owner.
Okay. Now, I'm just, there's a couple of these situations in town where it's tough to make a right because of oncoming traffic from your left, and I'm familiar with one that there is an obstruction, and it, frankly, it's a little bit dangerous to hang that right, so.
Well, in particular, in this case, we're having it designed for 60 mile an hour, and it's not posted 60, but we're looking at worst case right now.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I think it is worst case. It's freeway speed out there. I know, I've been on that road many times. Well, this has to do, again, this is Condition 42, where they're talking about. Right, I'm not sure, let's see. Maybe it's Condition 47. One of the conditions is talking about in this very same area, that they should be designed with street trees. Wouldn't they, would they infringe on the sight visibility zone?
They could, but we look at whether or not the street trees create a wall or a fencing, so we make sure that when there, there's a part of the landscape plan, we review the landscape plan so that they don't create a situation similar to, like, you put a telephone pole out, you can see around the telephone pole, but if you had a wall of telephone poles, you couldn't see past them, and it's the same way with trees. So yes, they, they're required to do landscaping, but we make sure through the plan check process that you don't create a sight visibility problem.
Okay. And then Condition 43 talks about another concept, stopping sight distance. It shall be the principal criterion determining the location of an on- or off-site improvements. What's the difference between stopping sight distance and sight visibility zone?
Your sight visibility zone is the area that the driver's eye sees when they look down the street. If it's below three feet, they, you know, they don't need to see below three feet or above seven feet, so you have this zone which, based on where a driver is sitting in a car, where their eyes are that they need to be able to see the cars. That's the zone. And the stopping sight distance is an engineering mathematical calculation that's based on speed and distance, and when you see a car, how much time it takes to somebody to either safely make a decision to move into traffic, or a driver has enough time to stop without hitting a vehicle.
Oh, so the stopping sight distance has to do with the people on Olson versus the sight visibility zone of the people, that has to do with the people pulling out of the cul-de-sac, then?
That's correct.
So both are impacted by landscaping and anything that could be along the street, then, right?
That's correct.
I see. Okay. But it sounds like the city's pretty aware of the situation.
Yes, we are.
Okay, all right. I, I mean, I've been out, I've been out at the site, and, you know, it seems to me you'd have to get up a pretty good head of steam to get out there in traffic, you know, you kind of have to put the pedal to the metal.
Well, and that's, that's how we're having them design over 600 feet of sight distance, so they have enough time to get out in traffic.
Yeah, okay. All righty. This would be, I'm going to change the area now of questioning, questioning, and again, I hope I'm not jumping around too much, but there are a lot of conditions, so. On Condition, and this, thank you for your help on the traffic business. This is Condition 79, where it says fencing or walls between residential lots and open space. Prior to issuance of occupancy, all residential lot access to open space shall be precluded by non-gated fences or walls along the developable pad area. So I take it this is the walls or fences in the back of the homes that separates them from Lot 10, the open space?
That's correct. The, along the fences adjacent to the open space lot, it's supposed to be a split, split rail type of fence that will allow wildlife through, but it is to be, but, but there are to be no gates so that the property owners can, can access the, the open space from their, from their individual yards.
Oh, so this will be a split rail fence that'll be beyond the fuel modification zone, then? Or before it?
It would kind of, it would be around the perimeter of the, of the project itself, around the manufactured slope area, top of manufactured slope area.
So you envision like a three-rail fence?
That's, that's correct.
How high would that be?
I don't believe that that's, that's been determined yet.
Okay. Because there's just a lot of talk about walls and fences here, and I'm a little bit confused on some of that now, and so we got a split rail fence around the perimeter of the project that is designed to let wildlife through, but kind of separate the homes from Lot 10. that is designed to let wildlife through but kind of separate the homes from Lot ten, the open space. All right, but then we talk about Condition one twenty-seven where it says there'll be an eight-foot wall in the rear of lots seven through nine.
Yes, that's for the, the lots that, that front Olson Road. And that would be at, at the top of the slope. And the reason it's, it's eight feet is that that's the height recommended by the noise consultant to, to reduce roadway noise.
So this is another wall in addition to the fencing? This is something completely different, right?
Yes, this would be kind of like a normal track perimeter wall that we have.
But if it's in the rear of the houses, how does that, so wait, maybe I got the houses mixed up. If it's in the rear and the houses and that, is that between them and Olson Road then?
That's correct.
Okay, it's because of the way the houses are positioned. I see, okay, all right. But then, you know, you look at the scenic highway element. On, on page twenty-six, it talks about, no, I beg your pardon, on the MND, it talks about a noise barrier like we just talked about. And then the staff recommendations, it talks about eight-foot wall, but the MND talks about six-foot. On page twenty-six of the MND, it says, or make it page twenty-seven.
That is true, and as a matter of fact, the, for lots seven through nine, I believe the, that's interesting you should point that out, I believe the size was six feet, not eight feet.
Yeah, it says a six-foot, high, solid block or masonry wall should be conducted for a noise barrier. But the recommend, staffs are saying eight, so.
It should be six.
Yeah, that, that should be revised to six feet.
Okay, so it is going to be six feet?
At lots seven through nine, yes.
All right, and so that, right, that would be Condition?
One twenty-seven.
One twenty-seven, yeah. So one twenty-seven should read six feet.
Excuse me, Mr. Town wanted to add something.
Just to, to then clarify this point. Condition one twenty-seven should read six-foot wall in height for noise attenuation and lieu of eight. So we would make that change as part of the final conditions. Also, I wanted to mention with regard to the fencing that Commissioner Adam brought up earlier, this is Condition seventy-nine. That in conjunction with one twenty-seven is essentially saying that there would be split rail fencing but along the developable pad area. I just wanted to point that out because that then means that that rail fencing would be at the toe of the manufactured slope behind the residences. And in situations like this, we locate the fence at that location rather than the top of the manufactured slope to minimize the visibility of the fencing, in this case from Olson Road.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you tell me how high that split rail fence would be in all likelihood?
In this case, typically it would be a two-rail.
Two-rail.
Two-rail, and so it's, it's roughly thirty-six to forty inches maximum height.
Okay, that's good. That's what I wanted to know, thanks. Like I said, there's a lot of talk about walls and fences. I'm just trying to get my picture in my mind of what the whole thing's going to look like ultimately. Then Condition one twenty-nine talks about wall fence treatment. Appropriate uniform wall fence treatment, provide proper relief methods to break up monotonous periods. Now, is that, are they talking about the sound wall there? The, now to be six-foot sound wall?
Yes, that, that primarily addresses the, the, the track perimeter wall along Olson Road.
Okay. So that'll be articulated, so to speak, so it's, isn't like one big long?
Yes, like require like indentations or with, with, there could be pilasters or differences of materials or?
Okay, I understand. On Condition one forty-eight, it says open space area shall be fenced and posted to notify residents that they're protected from fuel cleaners and other direct effects. Is that the split rail fence that we're talking about there? So that would be the same as Condition?
That, that's correct.
That is, okay, so that'd be the same as Conditions seventy-nine. Seventy-nine and one forty-eight would be complementary, correct? Okay. All right. I was glad to see in the supplemental material that they, that you, that staff struck Condition thirty because I agree with the supplement that it's redundant in a sense because you have Condition eighty-three and eighty-four in there. And Condition thirty refers to it as a brush clearance zone. And I, I would prefer the other appellation which would be the fuel modification zone because from what I gather, a few modification zones is a little different than a brush clearance zone. Would that be correct?
That's correct. The, the brush clearance concept that, that used to involve the, kind of the, the complete removal of vegetation.
Right, right.
And the fuel modification zone requires landscape, transitional landscape planting that will form a transition between the ornamental plantings of the residential homes and the open space area.
Okay, I mean, considering we have a scenic highway here, and it is quite scenic as you drive through Olson, I don't think anybody wants to see a denuded hillside scraped clean of all vegetation for, you know, a hundred, yeah, a hundred feet. So what you're saying then is a few modification zone, it's selective brush removal. I mean, they go through and they take out the weeds, so to speak, but they leave the natural vegetation?
That's correct. The flammable material is generally removed, but the need of, the need of shrubs are normally preserved.
Mm-hmm. Is that the, is that the industry standard these days? Fuel modification versus?
For Ventura County.
Uh-huh, okay.
And perhaps other, other counties too.
All right. Condition one twenty-four talks about how we're going to irrigate the fuel modification zone. And it wasn't clear to me, so I presume we're going to have PVC piping up there, I guess. But is it going to be exposed?
Generally, we, we require drip systems in, in part of the area where there's kind of extensive need of shrubs to be preserved. And, but other areas, if there are no, no vegetation, we, we, we could require some, some impact heads. It kind of depends on the, the exact nature of the, the natural area. We kind of use a combination of both. But I generally use the brown line piping that kind of blends in with the natural.
What does that mean, brown line piping?
It's, it withstands the ultraviolet rays.
So it's just the color brown?
Yes.
But is it, is it above ground, is it exposed? What I'm getting at is, you know, on some, sometimes you'll see a denuded hillside with, you know, yards and yards of PVC pipe exposed. And it looks quite aesthetically displeasing.
Yeah. Generally, we, we try to have it designed so it blends in with the natural. And then also in, in areas where we may have some over-impact, some overhead impact heads, that also helps potentially during, during a fire where they could wet down the area. They're, they're supposed to remain operable at all times, the irrigation systems in the fuel modification zones.
So it'll be a drip system that's, for the most part, underground then?
Well, there, there could be, there could be a combination of drip, drip systems and overhead spray systems.
But those would be brown line?
Yes, the piping would be brown line. And another reason that, that trenching is kind of discouraged is that it, with trenching, there could be potential erosion occurring. And if it's kind of laid on the surface, eventually it's, it's kind of covered by vegetation and, and more easily maintained.
Trench, oh, trenching as far as burying these lines?
Trenching the whole lines and burying it there, there could be, that, that area could erode especially if it was a steeper area.
Okay.
Commissioner Adam, could some of the other commissioners ask questions?
Oh, certainly. I just had a few more, but I thought we'd all just take turns, but, yeah, I didn't mean to.
Commissioner Fisher, did you want to, and then we'll come back to you, Commissioner.
Yeah, just one question for Ms. Lowry. I understand the deceleration lane. Is there any downside to putting in an acceleration lane on this project?
I, I can say, I haven't looked at the impact to the, to any of the slopes if to move the street an additional ten feet to the south. So I could say there, there potentially could be some impact because you're adding more pavement, more grading, so I could look at it. But, you know, from a traffic standpoint, does putting more pavement out there make things better? I guess it, it would, might make someone feel like they have more area to accelerate. But that's a balance between do you, how much more grading we have to do and how much more pavement's out there.
Yeah, I think you certainly estimated it correctly, it's sixty miles per hour just being out there. I think it is freeway speeds and that would be one concern. The other concern that was brought up previously with any landscaping and keeping that down to a minimum. So, you know, I don't know how often city crews go out and look to see if that's in compliance or other parts of the city are in compliance with their landscaping and sight distance and that type of thing. But certainly having a, an acceleration lane would eliminate some of those fears of the vegetation growing over to where you can't see. But I think that's probably something that we should look into is if that would fit into the project, an acceleration lane.
I should also add, there's, the road is wide enough that there's a bike lane out there. So when you turn right, you don't immediately turn into the travel lane. Somebody could turn into the bike lane and merge on. Certainly I hope there's no bicyclists in the bike lane when someone's doing this, but that, that is available out there, you don't move right into the travel lane.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Grimney?
Yes, I just wanted some additional clarification, just to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly, either from Ms. Noonan or from Mr. Town. Regardless of whether we approve or not approve this, it's going back to the City Council, is that correct?
That is correct. This case has been appealed to the City Council, but after it was appealed to the City Council, the plans were revised. And in that situation, our code stipulates that the council should refer such a case back to the commission. So you're going to make a recommendation and it's going to be back, sent back to the City Council. Technically, the case is still under the jurisdiction of the City Council at this time.
Okay, so once anyone goes to appeal, the process now always ends up being completed at the council level, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, it's just first time on something like this.
Okay, we'll go back to Commissioner Adam, finish your question.
Oh, thank you. Whoops, thank you, just a couple of quick more. So there were some rare plants found on the site, lion's pitaquita and the caneho dudleya. But it's outside, it's in Lot ten. So far, none has been found on any lots one through nine. Why, just out of curiosity, what if, you know, we get into the blooming season and this project is approved and they did find some in lots seven through nine? What would happen?
Well, we would have to evaluate that and determine what could be done to mitigate any impacts. We've looked very carefully at lots seven through nine and it is not really appropriate habitat. The plants occur well up slope in, and they tend to occur in areas where the vegetation is sparse and usually has kind of a macrobiotic crust. And conditions really are not favorable for those plants in those areas, so we wouldn't expect it. However, there is a condition that there'd be a biologist on site to do a basically presence, lack of presence, you know, review of that site if, or when the grading takes place, prior to grading, I'm sorry.
Have you ever had that experience where one of these rare plants was found unexpectedly in a tract that was undergoing construction?
That very seldom happens. There have been cases where the project hasn't been as, as well looked over as this has where that has occurred, but in general, we know where these plants are going to occur. They're very specific in terms of the requirements they have.
Okay. And one other thing about drainage, we're probably all very conscious of drainage these days after the rains we've had. And there's a, this is a hillside, so there's natural drainage downward. If you, if it fill in those little canyons, how's that going to affect the drainage of that, of that slope?
That probably is a question for Public Works.
Oh, all right.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, the city's hydrologist?
Hello, how are you? Well, actually then you can maybe answer my first question too about, you know, filling in those canyons. What about settling and, you know, with structures on top of them? And then also the drainage issue, if they're filled in, where's the water going to go?
The applicant's engineer indicated that he would be wanting to field that question and actually, he probably has reference to some of the soil characteristics that I don't have with me. So as far as the settlement goes, I can tell you this. Normally, there's a requirement for sub-drainage in such a deep fill which means small perforated pipes actually throughout the fill region. In absence of that, or excuse me, in supplemental to that, we do require a very tight compaction to the soil that's placed. Ninety percent compaction is the minimum. So it's very dense dirt, so we don't expect it to do much more settling. But there are, there are going to be provisions for that concern and it's, it's usually engineered in the fill. Now, as far as the water coming down off the hillsides, the water is still going to be flowing downhill. And there will be intercept facilities along the perimeter of those lots, usually terrace drains, V-ditches if you will, that are somewhat not apparent to people that are down below. They're built into little terraces that are carved into the side of the hillside there. They'll be intercepting the nominal flow. Any flow that exceeds the capacity of that ditch in a really rare rainfall event will naturally spill over and somewhat uniformly, we expect, continue to sheet flow down into the backyards and through the, around the structures. But the terrace drains themselves will handle most of the storms.
Whose responsibility is to maintain those V-ditches from debris and all that stuff they can collect in them?
The property owners are required, sometimes the association, but typically that's CCNR that applies to each individual property owner.
Okay. Well, I can tell you from firsthand experience, not all property owners know they are to maintain their V-ditches. But that's one, there's a way to learn the hard way on that when you see a wall of water descending into your backyard. Anyway, but that did answer my question about the drainage. And I just, this is a, this is more of a general question. Prior to, I don't want, know exactly when this would have occurred, but prior to the application, is there, was there any sort of history of negotiations between the city or between COSCA or both to, to buy lots seven through nine for open space?
I believe Mr. T- I believe Mr. Town can answer that.
Good.
Thank you. Staff did actually look into the purchase, not so much of lots 7 through 9, but the entire property. And this goes back, I'd say about, oh, probably four to five years. And at that time, the price was simply too high for acquisition. And so what we have before us tonight is essentially a plan that, if it's ultimately approved, would preserve about 75% of the property as open space without public expenditure. But to acquire that additional 25% was simply out of reach in terms of the city's budget.
Is there any talks to just purchase lots 7 through 9?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair, I think that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, then we will go with our speaker, Mr. Dale Ortman. And you have 15 minutes. Would you please state your name and city of residence for the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dale Ortman. I'm lucky enough to live and work in the city of Thousand Oaks. I'll try to get through this kind of quickly. I chatted down some of the questions that the commissioners asked and I think I could maybe add a little bit more than what staff did. Although staff did a very commendable job and I really thank them for all the time they've spent in putting the, not only the MND, which was excellently prepared, but also the conditions. Mr. Rinkie did a great job. Starting off, I'm representing Mr. Humkar tonight who could not be here, but he proposes to live on one of the houses on lots 7, 8, or 9. And I know that's been his goal for a long time. He's a resident of Simi Valley now. He wants to live here on this property. Commissioner Adam, you asked a question about the grading. And in the MND, if you take a look at the mass grading exhibit, it's the second fold out exhibit, it shows very clearly where the cut and fill are designated. And if you look a little more carefully, you can see where the house footprints are or the proposed homes. We don't know exactly what the home will look like at this point. Kind of gives you an idea of where the cut-fill line is. Basically, the upper portion of the land is cut, the lower portion is fill. There's two lower canyons. The one most westerly will remain in natural state. It is currently a sump area that has an inlet where 24-inch RCP drains across Olson Road. The canyon a little bit further to the east will have some fill over it to allow the road to intersect with Olson would be the access cul-de-sac. And to the south of that, we're maintaining the lower area of that canyon as a storm drain inlet and a sump area, and that's where detention will occur. So both of those sump areas that now receive the runoff from the hills will remain as far as receiving the same quantity of runoff from the hills and transporting that through the pipelines. So that was a careful analysis that we did on the hydrology study to ensure that the difference between a 10-year storm and 100-year storm in a developed condition is maintained exactly the way it is now. So that's fairly standard in Public Works. Makes us go through all the hydrology and you'll see in the, there's a hydrology report contained in the MND which further explains that. Further, the next, the next exhibit, the next fold out is called a 25% slope exhibit. And it shows very clearly in the crosshatches area what areas of 25% slope are being developed. And you could clearly see that the greater portion of that is the sump area that I just mentioned where the road intersection will occur. On the, on the space that's going to be labeled as fuel modification, that will occur behind each of those residences. The condition really has been written by the city that that is to be maintained by the homeowners association. This will occur not only on the approved six lots that we handled a year ago, but it will also occur here. And even though we show the property lines extending up to where Lot 10 is, and that's going to be modified on the final map, and there will be another lot between the pads and the open space that will be maintained by the homeowners. And that's where the fuel modification is going to occur. And I think that we've done this on a number of tracts throughout the city and I think it works very well. The homeowners association usually handles that much better than private homeowners. Mr. Fisher, Commissioner Fisher, you brought up the question about the deceleration lane and whether an acceleration lane, there's also a signal upstream on Olson Road where the sheriff station is, which does put a gap in traffic. So having been out at the site and having driven Olson Road many times myself, I very often get caught on that signal. But that is another method for traffic gaps to occur, to allow houses, and there are only three homes, for traffic to make that right turn out. So that is another area that will assist the homeowners in adequately making a right turn safely. Also, in putting the improvements along Olson Road, we are putting in an eight-foot sidewalk, but there are no street trees on Olson since we have a real wide landscape median. So there really aren't those street trees that you see down the sidewalks that sometimes interfere with your line of sight. We're not going to have that. And I think the, the final comment I had was, again, I wrote down a question here on the maintenance of the V ditches and that will be taken care of by a homeowners association. So I think that will relieve the individual property owners of having to do that. I don't have any other comments. If you have further questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Questions to Mr. Ortman? Mr. Adam?
Oh, thank you. Hello, Mr. Ortman. I think I heard you say an eight-foot sound wall, but I think it's supposed to be six feet, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe the sound wall on the six homes was eight feet. And I think that that was probably just a typo or something they overlooked on these. But yes, I read six foot high in the, in the sound report myself. And that's what we intend. We intend to put a six-foot block, probably mantering with some different materials. And I think the condition referred us back to some of the walls that occur further down Madera. Try to pick up some of those details. I think that would be appropriate.
So Lot 7 through 9 are right on Olson and it's, it can be a relatively busy highway. And the staff report points out that it exceeds that 65 decibels for, you know, noise pollution. Do you think a six-foot sound wall is going to be adequate to shield the residents from the traffic noise?
Absolutely. They're single-story homes. The highest window on a single-story home, you know, in a bedroom area is probably eight feet, it could be higher, nine feet. The houses are set back 35 feet from the top of slope. Six-foot wall at the slope with the noise generation from the street, I think would be more than adequate, yes.
All right. You'll construct the fuel modification zone to start out with, correct, as the builder?
That is correct.
Okay. And you intend to abide with, you know, with this concept of selective, how would you put it, selective?
Plant?
Plant displacement?
Cereal?
Yeah, SPD, selective plant displacement. I mean, what I'm getting at is, you know, you don't have any intention of denuding the hillside or anything like that. I mean, you're going to try to keep the?
Usually in this area, it's usually handwork that's done and it's monitored by the biologist. And it works very successfully throughout town. The irrigation pipes are used with special PVC pipe that kind of blend in. And after a while, you don't see them. And again, it's maintained by the homeowners association, not homeowners themselves who sometimes may have a hard time getting up on the hillsides.
Right, well, yeah, you'll construct it and then the HOA will maintain it.
Correct.
Would you anticipate that they'll maintain it in the state that you constructed in?
Absolutely.
And this modified area?
Fencing, fencing and planting, yes.
I just, you know, I think the old standard, it was just go in there with a weed whacker and knock everything down and oh, boy, we got our, we got our fire break.
No, the irrigation is there to get specific types of plants to thrive and at the same time restrict the growth of other plants. Again, it works effectively. The methodology that, that the city have used in the past hasn't really been probably as well thought out as it is lately, right now. We have a homeowners association. Years and years ago, when we did tracts, we left it up to the individual property owners and that's where we ran into problems sometimes. So I think the way the conditions are written and the way that the city approaches it right now, it works very, very well. I might also say that the city is getting 75% of this land for nothing. In fact, it's more than nothing. It's, the property owner and developer on this has to do extensive cleanup on the existing open space. There's an asphalt road at the top of the ridge that has to be removed. Certain plants and weeds will be probably removed with that. So when Mr. Town's group receives the land or the offer of the land, it should be fairly pristine, almost back to where it was originally before any development occurred many, many years ago. I don't know if that was the old Olson Road that went through there, but the asphalt's still pretty good shape up there.
I believe it was the old Olson Road. Or it was a, Mr. Rinkie was telling me, it was an old connector between, what was it, Mr. Rinkie, Thousand Oaks and Simi Valley? Yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of interesting.
So there's quite a bit of work that developer has to do before that's offered to the city and the, and the city's very, pretty, really good about making them perform. We've done this on a number of projects historically throughout the city in the past and continue to do so, but it's pretty good. They do a good job, so I take my hat off to them. As I said, I live in this city also. I live not far from here and I travel it a lot and I think it'll be a great addition to the city. I was looking out from my home today and on my way to work and I saw the snow on the Topa Topas and what an incredible view. And this property will have one of those views. Be great, great home.
Well, I'm glad to hear you're a local, so to speak, and?
Forty years.
Wow, that's, that's pretty local.
Getting old.
You know, I just want to be convinced that you and Mr. Humkar, and I think you do, understand the sensitivity of this area and that?
He does. Mr. Humkar is an avid hiker and I believe that's where he is right now. He's a hiker and a camper and he's close to nature. And like I said, he envisions this property as his home. So I'll do what I can to help him get there and I think it's a beautiful development.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ortman.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go back to staff. Do you have any additional comments?
No additional comments.
And questions of staff? Mr. Town?
Just to make one quick follow-up comment to one that Ms. Orbin just made, there will be a separate fuel modification lot around both residential clusters of this tract and that is required via condition number 124, which requires creation of those lots and then formation of a homeowners association is required through condition number 134.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ortman, you have five minutes if there's anything else you wanted to add. Will you please state your name and city of residence again?
Earl Ortman, Thousand Oaks. Just one additional thing, I did receive the supplemental package and I have no problem with the way the conditions are written. I forgot to mention matter of here, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time then I will close the public hearing. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, being here at the, the first meeting that we had on this particular project, we went over it pretty extensively and they have come back and taken care of all the concerns that the commission had as well as myself. I certainly would like to see staff as part of this going forward to the council is take another look at an acceleration lane. Certainly wouldn't hurt, I don't know what that would do to grading, but I think it's worth looking at. So I'm satisfied with what has come back to us. So I'll go ahead and move that we recommend to the city council that they approve the mitigated negative declaration number 218 and the mitigation monitoring plan. And do I need to go over the appeal? Okay, and approve the appeal, thereby approving the project, including the three lots originally deleted and with the revised findings and conditions as well as condition number 127 with the six-foot wall.
And did we need to add the supplemental package or?
I thought I did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Adam?
You did change it 127 to the six-foot wall, right? That was at the end, okay.
Just for lots 7 through 9?
Correct, yeah, lots 7 through 9. Well, I came in this evening very unconvinced about this. You know, it's on a scenic highway, it's in a sensitive area, a lot of pros and cons to the project. I must say, I wasn't here for the first hearing, but I'm glad to see it's off the ridgeline, I think it should be. And I like Mr. Ortman's answers on some things and I just trust that the city will be diligent in enforcing these conditions and Mr. Ortman and Mr. Humkar will also live up to the responsibility that they have for this area. Because this area is a sensitive area, it's on a scenic highway, it's a kind of showcase. So, but I, from listening to you and knowing that you've lived in the city for 40 years, I think you will, so I'm going to support the motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Grimney?
I am going to also support the motion. I think this is a win-win for everyone and I'd like to thank city staff for their efforts in this and also the applicant for their willingness to come into the city and cooperate and come up with something that ultimately is the best for the community. So thank you.
Commissioner Lynn?
I just will echo the comments of the other commissioners and say that I'm pleased that we can work this thing through. That was a very lengthy, complicated, difficult original hearing at this commission the first time through. And I want to commend the applicant for coming back with something that I think is going to be workable and be good. And also, I would also concur with city staff's very difficult work on this project, going back and forth, and you guys have done a great job with that.
And I also will support the motion. Just wanted to make a couple of comments regarding peak traffic. I don't think that's when it's going to be the fastest. I think that was when it's the slowest and so it'll be a lot easier to merge in there during peak times. during peak times. I did just, just when I went on the planning commission, I went with the traffic commission because I had been on it for 22 years and they went out to the sheriff's station and stood just east of the property at a driveway. I don't know if it's really used, but we stood at an opening with radar guns and there was another type of, of speed device used that night besides the radar gun. I think it might have been a laser that was used. And we clocked people coming down and going west on Olson Road and the majority of them were around that 60 miles an hour. There were some even faster. It was really something to see there. So, I think that you, Commissioner Fisher, talking about the acceleration lane, that it might be a, a good thing to look at there, that it is a street that's very heavily traveled and at high speeds too. So, but anyway, Commissioner Fisher, do you have any comments to your motion?
Just one last comment and the city is also picking up 31 acres of open space at no cost. That's pretty significant. So, that's a, that's a big gain for the city.
Okay. If no further comments, would you please vote?
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Thank you. And should we continue on? We'll go to Ms. Lynn's items, reports, and referrals. Anything, Mr. Town?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to bring a couple of items to the commission's attention. First of all, if I could turn your attention to page 117 of your packet, we do have two cases planned for February 11th, your next meeting. Currently, there are no cases planned for February 25th and then they begin to, the agendas begin to fill up again starting March 10th. Also in your packet on page 119 is a summary of cases which have either been heard by the city council after your review and recommendations or will be heard shortly. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And minutes of the January 14th, 2008. Commissioner Lynn?
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve the meeting minutes of the planning commission as drafted on January 14th, 2008.
Please vote.
Motion passed 5-0.
And are there any AB 1234 reports? Okay. Commission comments? No comments? Then I will adjourn the meeting to 6:30 PM on February 11th. Good night.